I'll call the meeting to order, and before we begin, let me read the emergency evacuation procedures. In the event of an emergency evacuation, an alarm will sound. Everyone should exit the building by way of the nearest stairwell in a safe and effective manner. If the nearest stairwell is blocked by smoke, use the other stairwell. Do not use the elevator. Once you have reached the main floor, follow the exit signs to exit the building and quickly proceed away from the building. Please be mindful of others evacuating and of emergency vehicles. With that said, you have the minutes from last month's meeting. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Final plat's major subdivisions, lots five to seven, Amburn Builders LLC property off of Peach Orchard. John?
Doug is out sick tonight. He was not feeling well today or yesterday either, so I told him just to stay home. No need to spread it around. The first item is lots five to seven, Amburn Builders off Peach Orchard Road. You'll notice there's another related Amburn Builders property, lots nine to twelve. These were split off and developed in two separate tracts over about five years. They're just now culminating in a final plat for both of them. There's been some lots that have been created off of that already. So I'm gonna go through the first one and then the second one. I'm gonna go to the outstanding items to be completed. You can read the analysis. It's very straightforward, but the outstanding items to be completed is on page three. The erosion from the adjoining subdivision required some correction on this plat. While they were correcting this plat, they also made some, they opened up a few other problems. So the erosion and the situation for drainage is still a little bit up in the air, still needs a little touch up. So that's gonna be one outstanding item still be, to be completed. Not sure about the electric utility, but they will sign the final plat and that will resolve that one. The copy of the final maintenance agreement still needs to come to staff for review, but that's a routine matter. And the signature plats and forty dollar per lot plating fee is routine also. I'd suggest that the option three, grant final plat approval, subject to meeting all requirements, applying identified conditions, and addressing deficiencies.
Any questions, comments, Commissioner McClellan?
John, can you have him add that on track seven, that extend that thirty-foot building line through that easement and then on the...
Actually, that's a, that is not a frontage on the easement. I see what you're saying. It does continue.
The easement goes over the hews.
I see what you're saying. That's actually a flag lot, is what the reason I was saying there. Okay? Yeah.
And then show it on the other one, on nine, ten, eleven also. Eight, nine, ten, eleven. He's got it noted, but I just make it clear if it shows it.
So you want on nine, ten, eleven on the other plat also?
Twelve too, I guess. Be sure they don't build right up in that corner.
Okay. How about lot eight? Add that in too. We can, we can tell them to put that in. It won't harm anything. Just be some added information.
John, I'm assuming that it says the erosion that was caused from adjoining subdivision, that lots five, five through seven, and lots nine, you're talking about the same two subdivisions, right? They were getting in each other's way, I'm assuming is what that means?
Well, it's the next one on the remaining lands of Amburn Builders. That, that contains another common driveway, and there were some erosion control problems going on for that one, so that needed to correct that. But when they corrected that, they opened up a few other things. So they just need to keep on working until they conclude that whole thing.
I'll make a motion for approval, grant plat, subject to meeting all requirements of like identified conditions and addressing deficiencies.
Do I have a second? Any further comments or questions? That motion includes the recommendation on the...
Thirty-foot setback.
The setback line. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. John?
The next item is gonna be very, very similar. It's a subdivision of the Amburn Builders LLC property, lots nine to twelve off Peach Orchard Road. You've got the analysis there. I'll go to the outstanding items to be completed. Again, the all onsite erosion controls shall be in place for ditch stabilization prior to releasing the final plat. Some erosion from the ditch work has filled ditches, adjoining driveway tile with silt. Silt in the tile and excess silt in ditch shall be removed by the owner prior to releasing the final plat. They are working on that, and they've opened up a few other things, as I said before, and may need to touch up. Electric utilities shall certify the final plat for all improvements and supply a copy of the final maintenance agreement, the signature plats and forty dollar per lot plating fee. Again, I, you refer you to item, to option three, grant final plat approval, subject to meeting all requirements, applying identified conditions and addressing deficiencies, including the addition again of thirty-foot minimum building setback line.
Do I have any, Commissioner French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It states in the background information that lot twelve has separate road frontage, and we're, and looking at the map, is it Sue's Way what they're talking about, or...
It, it has frontage on Peach Orchard. If you look at the...
Lot twelve?
If you look at the configuration of lot twelve, it's got a big portion in the back, then a constricted portion, then a long strip going up to Peach Orchard.
I see that, but why does it not say anything in there about it on, on the previous...
Because that wasn't on the previous plat. As a lot.
The, the previous plat, are those dotted, looking at lots nine through twelve, the previous plat are the dotted lines?
Yeah, I see that. I guess my question is, in, in, in the previous plat, it says a twenty-five-foot common driveway easement is planned to serve lots nine through eleven in previous lot eight, but it doesn't say anything about lot twelve. I, I, am I reading that wrong?
Well, the previous plat does not plat lot twelve. It's this plat that plats lot twelve. There's two plats. Previous plat did not plat lot twelve. This one plats lot twelve.
I think, I think the, well, the number twelve is what's pre-...
Yeah, I don't see...
Yeah, it's like, it's almost like it's...
Yeah, it's, it's...
It's called lot whatever, it could not be assisted, that's the confusion that that actually was, kind of, part of the...
Right.
What is?
Well, part of the...
I'm not sure I'm following.
I, I guess my question is this. In either plat, it doesn't say there's a rightway to lot twelve, is what I'm asking. It doesn't say, where's the rightwa, in either, in either one of these, it doesn't say lot twelve has a rightway to it.
Do you...
And I see, I see the...
The road frontage is...
Right.
That's really...
Lot twelve will use, lot twelve will use the common driveway on the plat that's being under consideration right now, but it has direct frontage on Peach Orchard Road. So we don't count it within the four maximum.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Is that answer, is that addressing the question?
Lot seven is the flag lot.
That's, uh, lot eight is the flag lot.
Lot eight is the flag lot, okay.
I'm sorry, lot eleven, lot eleven is the flag lot.
Lot seven is the flag lot, right.
No, lot eleven is the flag lot on the plat that's under consideration right now. There's two separate plats.
Yeah, I see that.
Okay. So lot eleven is the flag lot on the plat under consideration right now.
I, I, yeah, I see what you're, what you're referring to. I just...
Sometimes it's not too clear with the shading and the dotted lines, but that lots ten, eight, nine, and ten have exclusive access on the easement. Lot eleven actually has the frontage as a flag lot, and lot twelve has an alternate frontage, but it is also using the easement.
Which, excuse me, Commissioner?
Go ahead, finish your question there.
Did you have another question?
Yeah.
Commissioner McClellan?
Should this plat say that four, five, six, and seven do not have access to that easement? There's nothing to keep them from it if you don't say it, is there?
Well, yeah, it would be, because they're not part of this plat.
Yes, but they, they back up to it. What's to keep them from coming in the back of their property?
It, it doesn't matter. I mean, you can, you can make it explicit on the plat, but if they're not part of the plat, they're not part of the sharing of the easement, just 'cause they touch it. It's like in, any situation where you have two properties, one establishes an easement along its line, it doesn't give a right to the, to the adjoining property owner for that easement.
But there's nothing to stop it from it.
Other than the maintenance agreement will say who has, if you wanna put explicit note on there, we can do that.
I didn't know whether to show it or not. One other question. I meant to look on the computer and didn't. The branch is not in a female flood zone, is it?
The what now?
The branch over there on twelve is not in a female flood zone, is it? I didn't, I meant to look and didn't.
Oh. We can check on that. If it is, then they'll need to put it on there, but Kevin's real good about putting floodplain information on it. He probably has a note on there somewhere.
I didn't see it.
We can check on that. Do you wanna put an explicit statement on the previous plat? You'd have to go back and reconsider that one as a, an amended motion.
Well, that, you know, it'd affect that a ton until you saw the next plat, and then... I just don't know how you keep four, five, six, and seven from using it if they choose to.
If they don't have rights on it, they can't use it.
I mean, they don't have rights, but if there's no fence, there's nothing to keep them driving across it.
Other than the other property owners wanting to do it.
Well, yeah, I mean...
It's a matter, it's a matter of defending your property.
I think the beach should go down through there as well. Probably realistically, prevent that route unless they put a post in there. Okay. Cause it is, it is on, on the side.
All right, do we have any further questions?
Even if it's not listed, John, it still doesn't, it still wouldn't give somebody a right to...
No.
That's, they don't have a right.
Yeah, you're assigning an easement to specific lots on this plat, not to any other land.
Bruce, which, which rightofway are you concerned about? The one that is shaded on this, on the...
Sue's, Sue's Way, I was concerned, plus to keep four, five, six, and seven access to the back of their property.
Do you go back, do you go back to the...
Yeah, it's a big ditch right there.
Yeah, you go back to the first separation we had, that's where you go back to that. They don't have a right to it.
Just as twelve doesn't have a right to the easement that was established for the, the other lots. Oh, that might be in question. I'm not too sure. Because it goes through to one in the back. It actually goes across them.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant final plat approval, subject to meeting all requirements, applying identified conditions and addressing deficiencies. Is that great, John?
Yeah.
Do we have a second? There's no further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Okay, this is a plat from South Blunt County Utility District for a pump station. In the past, we have recognized utility uses as a unique use that doesn't require a standard lot, and we've granted blanket variances to, for the utilities to divide off land. This is a similar situation. The outstanding items to be completed are consideration of the variances, and it's a blanket variance for, for just about everything for that little small lot, and submission of a plat with certifications, including environmental health department approval.
Any, Commissioner McClellan?
Do you tell him to add the acreage for twenty-five R one on there?
Okay.
Motion approved, subject to adding the acreage in staff recommendation.
Do I have a second? We got a second?
Yeah.
Okay, we've got one over here already. Tom, thank you. Bruce, what was, what was your addition?
Adding the acreage for twenty-five...
Acreage on twenty-five R one, he didn't put it, he left it off. He only put it on the, when it was cutting out. It had, it's got a remaining acreage on it somewhere.
That's easy enough to...
Right. He can write it in.
Yeah. Calculate very easily.
There's no further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Notice the motion includes the variances which have already been approved by the BGA.
Well, actually, there's no BGA involved in this.
Oh, I thought, I read that somewhere.
Was it? I'm sorry, I might've missed that.
It's about the site plan to submit to approve by the BGA.
Yeah, the site plan was submitted and approved by the BGA.
Oh, site plan, yeah.
Sorry, John.
That's fine, I'm just filling in tonight on these.
Okay. Long range.
Okay. First, want to pay, turn your attention to a handout. I wrote up a summary of the comments from the workshop. I only have a copy of myself, and later on your desk. I will also put this on the webpage. I just finished them this afternoon, so I'll get them on the webpage under the title for the workshop. And also referenced that the video is both on the county website and on YouTube, if anybody wants to view that. What we're here for tonight is for further discussion of commercial zoning alternatives along two-lane arterial roads in the county and possible setting of workshop. If we do set a workshop, I'd like to have some specific goals for the workshop. The last one was kind of a loose input session. I think we're to the point that we need to get a little direction on this. We can discuss the direction of the whole issue tonight. One of the alternatives, as was pointed out at the public input, was we can do nothing. We can just drop this if that's the will of the planning commission. However, we have been discussing it over the past few months, and there seems to be some interest of at least discussing this issue to some conclusion. So if we can, if we're gonna have a workshop, let's have some, some specific goals. I think what, what I'd like to do tonight is just to open it up for some general discussion, any questions you have, and then attack the issue of setting a workshop at, at a little bit later time. I think Mr. French has got it.
All right, floor is open for comments from the commissioners. Commissioner French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I agree with John. If, if we set a workshop, I'd like to see some specific goals, especially what I'd like to see is what is being proposed? What, you know, what are you proposing? Where and what? I, I, you can't say what, I guess, but what I wanna see is where you're proposing these changes? What, you know, what intersections are you looking at? What, and possibly the width of the, the width of the area, or the width of the area that you're proposing the change to, to commercial development is, is what I'd like to see.
Well, that kinda jumps the gun. I'm not making any proposals, other than that we discuss the issues and some alternatives that I've provided. You get in, when you get into that detail, that's what the workshop should be, determining that. It's not a matter of me proposing to you, it's you going through this and discussing it and seeing if there are potential intersections that could be identified and, you know, what the character of those intersections would be, and what might be included, either in special exception with limitations or a separate zone. So I'm not making a proposal, so it's premature for you to ask me to locate that, and, you know, I think that should be the subject of the workshop itself. That should be discussion among yourselves.
I agree, but I wasn't, I'm sorry, I wasn't asking you specifically. I was putting that out for the, for the planning commission to think about. I, I wasn't expecting you to come by, but I expected the planning commission to come through and say, okay, this is what we're looking at. I'd like to see what specific areas we're talking about.
Okay. I, I understand now.
Yeah.
I thought you were directing that at me in particular.
I know, I was looking at you when I saw you.
Okay. Which would be the easier or the smartest way? Would you identify certain intersections, or you do the road classifications where they cross? And then take those intersections or those classification crosses and then you, which would be the simpler way to try to do that? Because you can't just go and name which intersections, can you? You could in the final regulations. That's, that's part of limiting, there's, we're talking about limiting this with, by use to character that would be in character with what we're talking about in the R one zone along those two-lane roads. And also possibly geographically. You could identify it geographically generally, or you can be specific to intersections. And by the way, before I go on, I wanna note that I'd let, for some reason, I had left out Burnett Station Road as a, as an intersection of a major collector with Highway four eleven in my analysis, and I wanna add that to the, to the list. That would be a list on, I think, page three, no, let's see, page five. So I should've gone River Ford Road, Wildwood Road, Prospect Road, and then Burnett Station Road, major collector, and then Hinkle Road, major collector. I just inadvertently left that off. But those, those are, I've, I've identified a, an array of roads. That doesn't mean I'm recommending all of those be included. That is part of the discussion, I think, of a workshop.
You do that orientation on there, John. It's just after you've got Prospect Road, mine collector, and then Burnett Station and the main collector, right after.
Oh, I just didn't, I didn't break it at the colon. I see. Well...
I thought I read that on there.
I thought I did too, but when I looked down, I just looked at the first part of those things and didn't see the rest. I just didn't break it at the col, semicolon. Thank you for pointing that out. And along those same lines, I'm just trying, I'm like you, I'm trying to say, what is the right, smart way to do it? So let's say you identify these intersections, or you identify the classification road. Either way, do we, what, what would be the benefit of creating another zone? Would, would there be a benefit of creating another zone? Well, we discussed a little bit of the benefits and the, and the drawbacks to that. If you create another zone, that puts it into a, a process of the planning commission recommending the zone as it comes up, usually by application from a prospect, and then going to the county commission, and the county commission actually taking legislative action to amend the zoning map to apply that zone. Okay? The other alternative was to put it to the Board of Zoning Appeals, predefined all your standards, and predefined all your locations, and just say if you are within that predefined definition of standards, then you can have a commercial use by special exception with limitations. That was the approach before, but I did point out that another alternative is the, going through the legislative process. Legislative process would be a little bit more cumbersome. You have less of an ability then to, to control the design. If you go through the Board of Zoning Appeals, that is more of a permit type of process with the Board of Zoning Appeals having a little bit more flexibility in applying design standards. Once you set a zone, you set the standards, all they can do is bring in a proposal, and if it meets that, then it comes to the planning commission. You don't have that much flexibility for saying, we need some changes. Do we want that flexibility? Maybe we don't want the flexibility. I'm, I'm just speaking out loud. That's, that's up to you. I'm not taking a position, but maybe we don't want that flexibility in these areas. Well, flexibility for, in design allows you to, to more closely mitigate impacts on surrounding properties. In other words, if you see something there that, that would require greater buffer or something like that, and you don't have a standard necessarily set, you could say, we need greater buffer on this side because of the use that's next to it. If you set a zone, you're pretty much setting the standards up front, and if they meet it, you don't have that kind of flexibility of, of requiring greater standards. It, it's kind of, it's a, there's not a clear-cut distinction there. If it's written properly, even a defined zone could grant the planning commission some leeway in applying a little bit more than is explicitly stated. But you gotta be very careful there, because a zone presumes that you're defining a right of permit. A special exception is like a use-on-review. The use-on-review gives the Board of Zoning Appeals a little more flexibility in looking at the context of the surrounding area. And it takes it out of, we discussed this before, it takes a little bit out of the politics of a legislative body. So if I'm kinda hearing what you're, what you're describing, we shouldn't look at the zone aspect of it? No, I'm not saying one way or the other. I'm just saying that there are pluses and minuses both ways. Board of Zoning Appeals sometimes does not follow its own directives in the, in the zoning regulations. I mean, that, that process can, can foul up too. It takes some diligence in making sure that people understand what their roles are and why you're doing what you're doing.
Commissioner French?
And I guess what, what I've heard is, if we do set up a set of regulations for a particular zone, that at a later date, depending on what the use is, it would be harder to come... harder to come back and, and say, well, we don't, we can't, we don't want to do this here. We want to change it because that's going to affect something down the road. You're saying we, it would be hard for us to come back and change those?
I, I'm not sure I quite followed the question.
If we set up a, a different zone?
Yes.
In, in, in your answer to Commissioner Hodge, if we set up a different zone and we set up specific guidelines for that zone and at a later date, if something comes in that maybe we didn't set up the strict enough guidelines, it would be harder for us to come back in and change that? Is that what you?
Well, you can come back and change it, but usually the, the horse is out of the barn. If you have a proposal and you see a problem with the proposal and it meets all the regulations, you shouldn't, you should be very wary about denying something that meets all the regulations. In other words, if you have a zone and it has defined regulations, something comes in as a site plan to the planning commission, meets all the regulations, you should be very wary about turning it down just because you see a problem with the regulations as they are written. You've got to let that horse out of the barn, close the door, change the regulations then for whoever might come later.
Well, I guess, I guess it's kind of, it's kind of tough for me to, to grasp because if you don't know what's coming, how are you going to write guidelines for it if you don't know what's, I guess that's my question.
What you do, what you do on a zone is you define the uses that you will allow and you have some idea of what the character of those uses would be, okay? And you write regulations to, to address those issues of, of design and development.
Okay.
Okay? So you will have to think it through and predefine the uses. You'll do the same thing with a special exception situation, but it gives the Board of Zoning Appeals a little bit more flexibility of saying no if they see a, a direct impact that was not foreseen.
Right, okay.
That's what the use is, correct?
Yes.
That's what the use is, is what you're talking about.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirby?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I requested if you could find.
I'm still working on that.
Okay, that's all I need to know. That would give me a lot of information.
Yeah, the, the time difference between the workshop and now is a little bit short for me to get everything together.
Commissioner LaFleur? We're only making recommendations that go to the county commission for final approval. Any other thoughts? Commissioner Kirby?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is it easier for BZA in the zone, the way it's set up now in R1? Would it be easier for those people to do their job if we did have like commercial zones instead of them having to worry with who can and who can't and the exceptions and so forth that they go by?
Well, if you set up a, a zone that just has uses permitted, like our general commercial zone does, then it doesn't go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. It goes to the planning commission as a site plan approval. And you've seen those, you just look for conformity with the, what the use is allowed and, and with the standards that are applied in, from the zoning regulations. Okay? So yes, it'd make it easier on Board of Zoning Appeals, they wouldn't even see it if it's a, if it's a separate zone.
Well, is it easier for them to say no than it is for us?
Well, again, if, if you, if you have it as a use permitted and you have a set of standards and somebody submits a site plan that it, the use is permitted in that zone and it meets all the standards of design, I would, I would caution you about denying something based on extraneous factors. We've gone through this before. It's not a popularity contest. And the county's been sued a couple of times by telecommunication towers. The Board of Zoning Appeals denied a, a telecommunication tower and they didn't really have the authority to do so and the county had to tell them to back off and, you know, if it meets the regulations, you've got to approve it. There's, there's implications there. So, you know, keep in mind, when I said BZA can foul things up too, they, they can.
So they move it here, right? We, we?
Yes.
Have, have, it has their, it meets all their criteria?
Mm-hmm.
What would like it?
That's why it's very important to have this discussion in detail before you set these regulations. I'll just leave it at that.
Commissioner Kirby?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again. So the question before us, do we want to do these zones or we don't want to do these zones?
Yes, that, that is one of the questions.
That's number one, what we've got to decide we want to do.
Yeah. Well, there's, there's two, there's a major question. Do you want to go forward at all?
That, that's what I'm saying, whether we want to or whether we don't want to.
Whether you want to have either a BZA or a new zone or nothing at all, basically status quo the way it is.
And, and you want to, you want to set up another workshop with, with specific, what we want to do and how we want to do it. And I'm just not for setting up no more workshops till we can get some stuff that's working like I requested. Now, that's my opinion.
You're talking about the other examples?
That, that's in, that's some counties have got in effect and how they're working and so forth. That's what I'd like to see.
Well, what I'll bring you is a few counties and some smaller municipalities that have two-lane roads that they're addressing development of commercial uses.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Roddy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm struggling with how much pull there is to do anything. The problem statement says we've received several inquiries. Is that five or 500?
It, well, it's not 500, but it's greater than five. I, I can't give you a count. What I'm saying is there, there is a latent demand out there for commercial uses. It ranges from a beauty shop to, you know, a chain store, smaller chain store, not a Walmart type, but it, it ranges in, in that range. And Roger gets most of them, mayor's office gets some, I get some. The main point I'm, I'm getting at is we have changed the structure of the R1 commercial use to such an extent that it does not conform, in my opinion, to our plans. Our plan stated very clearly that we were going to accept commercial uses in the rural areas. And this is opening up the discussion again after a, a kind of a reaction to some events down 411 as to do we want, first off, do we want to put them back in and how do we put them back in, given the discussions we had several years ago along 411?
Okay. Commissioner French?
I guess my question is of the five roads that qualify as the minor arterials, if we do establish a new zone, can we exclude some of those roads or if we create a zone, is that, does that mean we have to include all five of those? Or can we, as a planning commission, say, hey, we're going to limit this to, say, 321 and, or 129 and, and the rest of them? No. I mean, can we do that?
Yeah, what you need to do is look at the character of each one of them. Let me just go down the list and, and give you some of my thoughts. 411 North is a moderately traveled arterial road that has some deficiencies in width. I mean, everybody recognizes that there's some shoulder problems there. It is on the, the list for improvements in the Transportation Planning Organization. There's been no money established for improvements there and, you know, that might be a consideration of where you want to establish anything like this. But it does function as a arterial road. It carries quite a bit of traffic and it's not got an undue amount of accidents. You know, people just feel uncomfortable driving on the road more than anything, I think.
Yeah.
Okay. Highway 129, Calderwood Highway, is a long stretch of road and there, there's several different characters of that road along the way. Part of it goes down to Tulasse, which is a, beginning to be a tourist point. People want to establish down there and that's quite, quite frankly, one of the reasons I brought up the campgrounds again because we do have some interest in campgrounds down in that area. So that, that, that road, I think, just from driving it, I feel more comfortable on it sometimes than I do on Severell Road because it's, I don't know, I did, maybe it's because of the, the ambiance of it. I don't know what it is. But Highway 72 doesn't really have any intersecting major roads. You could leave that off because it really is just a little short strip into the county. Highway 321 from Foothills Parkway to Townsend has some issues. There's, you know, maybe at the very beginning of, of that stretch and at the very end of the stretch, you might think about commercial uses, but in between, you really don't have much possibility for commercial use and you don't have any major intersecting roads. Ware's Valley Road is a, is another road that for a stretch has quite a bit of potential. I think when it gets up into the curves and the mountains, it's got some of, it, it gets to be uncomfortable to drive also and might be considered. So you've got to think about the character of the road. There's, there's certain stretches that might be appropriate, certain stretches that might not be.
You, you brought up a couple of things that, while, in that discussion. One, is it, it's kind of off the subject here of a new zone, but is there any way we can consider campgrounds separately, the campground information separately from creating the new zone?
You can if you wish, but quite frankly, it's, it's a commercial use that's going to be either in a separate zone or as a special exception with limitations and it, since it's a commercial use, I, it should be part of commercial use discussion.
And I understand that, but I think it's a separate entity in itself and I think if we're going to discuss it, we need to discuss it separately from creating the new zone. In other words, we're going to have to, I think, tweak it again, but that's just my thought.
Well, I've given you some of my suggestions on tweaking it. I, I followed the discussion and the, the objections in the county commission, some on the planning commission too. You know, some of it was just because it reached too far into the rural areas and so I, I'll let you take what I wrote as just a, just my own personal view on that. I, I, this is up to the planning commission as to whether they want to diverge on these two. Commercial use to me is a commercial use. Campgrounds did have quite a bit of more discussion than some other like a beauty shop or a barber shop or something like that. You know, they're of some different character, but it's still a commercial use. And it brings up another question. If you want to handle it separately, do you mean dropping that from discussion or going parallel on it?
Whatever the commission, whatever the mission would drive, I mean, I just think there's too, understanding commercial adventure.
But I think it's a little bit more in-depth, I think it deserves a little bit more in-depth discussion than just tagging along with creating a new zone is what reason I mention that.
There's been a lot of discussion on that already and, like I say, I, I tried to take that discussion, steal it into a, a little bit of a guidance to the planning commission.
So, so the existing scenarios now, let's just take 411 North. Those existing, I only use the word commercial, those existing businesses are currently zoned what?
They're grandfathered. They're zoned R1.
What is a zoning class? They're in R1 zone, correct? So if the use that they're currently having, if one of them goes out of business and so the new person comes in, is a new person could reopen with the same business or the same use?
My reading of state law gives them 30 months. My reading of state law gives them 30 months. If, if, if it's abandoned as a use for 30 months, it loses its grandfathering. So you've got a good long while before you hit that. So somebody that goes out, let's say goes out of business, sells the property, a, a new owner can come in and establish the same use. That, that's my interpretation of it.
But they're all currently R1 zone classifications?
The use is grandfathered.
Are they taxed on a commercial?
Yes. If they're commercial and they're, they're generating commercial revenues, then yes, they're taxed as commercial.
Okay, so the BZA never comes into play. Place goes out of business, new owner comes in a month later. It wants to change the use of that building.
I'd have to check with Roger on that. I don't handle that side of it.
What would be the, what would be the obstacles? You know, it's one, one, let's just say it's a little grocery store or whatever. Goes out of business, guy comes and says, I don't want to put a car lot in there or whatever.
Well, that's change.
What does he have to do to get that either approval or denial?
I think we-
Is that BZA? It's not BZA, is it?
I think we still have a provision in the regulations, but I'd have to check that that states that you can have a one-time special exception change of use and of a grandfathered use to another use of lesser, equal or lesser impact and that goes to the BZA.
But do we keep up with that though?
Roger does, yes.
He does?
We've had a few of those.
So that's basically we do nothing. That's the scenario that we have now.
I'm sorry, say again.
If we don't do anything, if we don't change anything or add a new zone, that's what we're dealing with now.
Well, what we're dealing with now is home occupation, family home enterprise, grandfathered uses that may change once but no more, and that's basically it.
I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of more the existing structures that are, that are currently there. If we didn't do anything, you-
They, they still go on.
Yeah, they still go on, but you really won't be, you wouldn't be in essence adding any other structures if nothing changed, correct?
Well, nothing changes and no uses change except one time. Now, that brings up a question, you know, we, we have something in our regulations, if, if my memory serves me correct, that allows us to change a non-conforming use as a special exception to another commercial use of equal or lesser impact, but that's a one-shot deal. Having provisions in the regulations to allow a broader range of uses would allow that, that market for that one structure to operate a little more efficiently in the future. In other words, they could change it to more than one time and to more than one use.
That's the question that I see before us is really back to what John's earlier opening comments were. Is this even something we want to do? And if you're not at the point of deciding whether it is or is not something we want to do, how do we even get to that point? Because we can't give John direction until, I think it's clear in our minds that we think there's something that, that needs to be done. Because once, once we open the, the gate, as John has reiterated tonight, you kind of lose control of it. I mean, once we open the gate for the, for commercial uses, you don't roll the gate back and that's, that's a big question.
Let me correct you. You've already come back once. We had it in and they took it out, so it is not a matter of, for now and forever. The special exception with limitation was actually taken out as a, in a totality from the R1 zone at one time.
You're right about that.
Now, in compensation, we created a rural arterial commercial zone for four-lane cross-sections. At the time, from, these were informal discussions at the time and talking to the county commissioners and the planning commission, the idea was we need to go back and revisit it. Then was just not the time to do it. That they realized that, you know, some commercial uses might need to be accommodated in the future, but they weren't going to, to do it at that time. We've done it a little bit incrementally. Since that time, we've added sports shooting range and a convenience store with gasoline filling station facilities. So we've added two to that total exclusion. If we go that route, we can just keep adding, you know, uses as they come up, but that's kind of reactive. That is reacting to somebody that says, I want to do it, and they put a point of pressure on it and, and try to get it through. I think it's better from a planning standpoint to consider it generally and say, what uses do we think are appropriate for that zone?
Well, but that's what you're doing, that is, you're making the decision, you think it's appropriate and you add, it's like-
Well, yeah, but the point of pressure is, is it makes it a little bit difficult to do it in the planning context.
I'm with you, but the result is the same.
After you go through contortions, yeah. I'm, I'm still, I, I honestly, I, I'm looking at this from a, I'm not shilling for any one developer or development. I'm shilling for the plan. The plan states very explicitly that we were to accommodate commercial uses throughout the county at different levels based on different contexts. We took out one major portion of that from the original zoning regulations with the, I think, the informal idea that we were going to come back and visit it again, but there seems to be a reluctance to come back and visit it again, except on a- But there seems to be a reluctance to come back and visit it again, except on an incremental basis. I think it's better, from a planning standpoint, to look at the totality and not each increment as it comes up. That gives you more direction. That gives the market more direction also.
Does the, in your opinion, you, you made, you made the comment earlier, the harder road is, is it harder to create another zone with the county commi-, with the county commission? Is the ultimate say-so on that, is that?
You have to ask the county commissioners that are sitting on the, the planning commission.
If it's not a reality, I'd rather not even, you know, take the time and effort and go down that road. And that's just an honest saying, you know? If there, if, I'd rather take alternate B if we truly think there's a need for either one of them.
Uh, you're, you're presuming a lot there. Uh, if you try to gauge a county commission, uh, I'm not sure you're gonna get a gauge of anything right now, and I'm not sure you're gonna get a gauge in the future. Uh, that, that skirts the question of what is your role? And your role as a, functioning as a planning commission? I think it is, uh, part of your role to look at things like this in a planning context generally, not specific to an individual proposal, not specific to an individual site, but look at it generally and make your best recommendation to the legislative body. They're gonna react to it, uh, one way or the other. They might say it's great and approve it, but they might say it's terrible and send it back to you. We've had that bouncing back and forth in the past. You're still fulfilling your function as a planning commission to discuss it generally.
Commissioner French?
I'm gonna give you my personal preference. And that's personally, after, after listening to some of the discussion here, it scares me to create a general zone. It scares me. Cause I, what, what concern, and the reason I say that is the airport, the airport fiasco we had several years ago. It scares me to create a general zone because I think when we set parameters, there's something that's gonna come up that is gonna cause us to, to wanna change those parameters. I, 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 I'm a firm believer in Murphy's Law. But my personal preference is, I don't think we need to create a new zone. If we're gonna do anything, let's put the, uh, specific exceptions back in and look at, look at the items one at a time. I know that's reactive, it's not proactive, I know that. But my personal preference would be to do that. Because then we've got the option to say no if we, if, if, if we're not happy with what that particular development is. But that's me personally.
Commissioner Kirby? What is it you requested of John? You wanted specifics from others, some other examples of, of other areas?
Yeah, I just like to say some statistics on someone's status type of operation. And I'm the type where we're talking about, what we can restrict if they're four and a half. And do away with the ones we want to have this type thing on. You know, and then as the county grows and the commercial side of forty percent of the tax, uh, that they're taxed against twenty-five on residential. And you've got to have a balance, you've got to have so much commercial to keep the property taxes down. The rate, the twenty-five percent still, still don't stay that, I would phrase it with a forty percent on commercial. But when you're, when you're a commissioner and you're dealing with two fifteen or two thirty, two thirty-five, wrong, no, trying to figure out a tax rate somewhere in here. And you've got to know how much commercial you gotta deal with. You've got to know how much residential property money you've got to deal with. You've got to find a balance in there where you gotta set a tax rate of two ten, two fifteen in order to keep the county growing and keep everything going forward. And if you don't keep up with all this stuff, you're going, you just can't make that type of thing. So, uh, right now, I can't tell you how much, our county, a hundred and twenty thousand people, uh, how many pieces of property is owed that's owned and paying taxes? Some people have estates, some people in state, and some people in the county paying taxes. And then same thing with commercial. We've got big organizations owning commercial property, they're sending in their tax money from wherever. And, uh, so we're talking about twenty-five commercial, seventy-five residential, you know? It's, you gotta good, gotta get, get a good feel of how much you can do. And then all this plays into what we're trying to do here. Trying to restrict and not restrict and do nothing. And then if you don't do nothing, and you say, no, we're gonna lift that at a dollar store or whatever, and then, uh, and then it comes back to us trying to set budgets and trying to set, uh, tax rates, uh, we're gonna keep up with all that stuff, you know? And you have six months, uh, you've got to weigh this thing, we're starting in January, looking at year thirty. So, uh, and it takes a lot of asking questions, you know, the controllers and, and all this type of thing. So, uh, it's, it's just not, you know, you just can't say this thing. No, we ain't gonna have any more commercials. Well, we're gonna stick to commercial here, and that's where you're gonna go. That's it. You know, the big stuff and the small stuff and, and the grandfathering and, and, and a small business.
I think you need to turn the microphone on there.
So, you know.
Could you repeat that?
No, no, I'm not gonna repeat that. But I, but I still like to have something that's working and, and just see how, how smooth it goes. And, and that brings in the public and, and, and it also brings in the commercial people.
I will, what I'll be able to do is to bring back to you some examples of other communities that have addressed commercial uses along two-lane major roads. I won't be able to tell you how smooth it's gone.
Oh, no, no, I know that. You know, that's no problem. But, but because we got, you know, the, all the people spoke at the last work session, ain't nobody want that. But it's like you say, you've got a growth plan that we've got to look at as, as planners and try to come out with a scale in between everybody else, you know? And, and, and try to work all this other stuff. And I'll just talk about the tax bases and how much commercial we got coming in and how much property taxes. Because it, if you got more commercial coming in and, and that, that takes pressure off your property side.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner French?
I, I agree with Gerald, I, I, you know, we can't stop, we can't stop growth. We, you know, this county's not gonna grow if we stop it. I think, I think our job is to control it, is, and, and try to control where, where it goes. That being said, is there any way that we, as a commission, without breaking the sunshine laws? What I would like to do is these five major roads, is there any way we might travel these roads and just look and see, or maybe we need to do that on our own? And, and just, uh, just travel these five major arterial roads that you've listed to see what kind, you know, I, I know what four eleven looks like. I've been down one twenty-nine and, and three twenty-one, but seventy-two, I, I'm, you know, I, I don't know that I've been down seventy-two. But I, I, I'd like to see the areas we're talking about.
Okay.
And I, can we do that in a van or do we need to do that by ourselves?
I would suggest we probably take it on as an assignment, as individuals, to travel the roads and, uh, scope them out. And I guess I would, I don't see a consensus at this point, John, for us to set a workshop. So I'm not, I'm gonna recommend we don't set a workshop right now because I don't think we have enough thoughts in our own head as to where we, whether we want to even move ahead. John, can I give you the assignment to bring what Gerald has requested? See if out of that, there's anything that prompts us then to put our heads together in a workshop to proceed. And I guess I would ask each one of you then to, to review again John's material and try to come up with, what is it we're trying to accomplish? Are we, uh, John is right, it is our responsibility as planners to, uh, try to set the tone. But we also have in our, in our heads, and we have heard from public input, the concerns, and, and John has reiterated it tonight. I mean, there are concerns about four eleven north. It is a well-traveled road, but it is also not in the plans anytime soon for there to be any significant improvements. We've had good input and we can get more, uh, public input. But right now, I don't, uh, I'm afraid we are, uh, we're muddling around. And before we go to another workshop, I'd, I'd like for us to have some thoughts for and against, and then let us hash them out and, uh, and if we need to, get further public input. So, John, if I could, I'll ask you to bring us some examples of perhaps other areas. And maybe out of that, we can get some feel for whether there is something we need to address and get thought to what Commissioner French has said. I mean, it is, I don't like the idea of being reactive and just continually adding special uses. But we have done that in the past. But then, then we suffer the accusation of, of just being reactionary and responding to individual request. Does that sound reasonable? Do I have a consensus input? Okay. John, you understand my request?
Yes, I, I'll bring back that information. Uh, and, uh, it shouldn't, I've actually got quite a bit of it already, it's just I didn't have it ready for tonight.
Okay. And we can revisit it after we have that input. Uh, we can decide to set a workshop and hash the whole thing out more. But I, I would like for all of us to be somewhat clear on what we're trying to, uh, to accomplish. Okay, John, what about some long ones?
Uh, just to have staff reports, very briefly. I would, I guess since we've gone a while, I'm not gonna ask for general discussion about training. Uh, I was, I'm asking all the planning commissioners to give me some direction on how I can provide the training a little bit more efficiently. Uh, almost everybody on this planning commission has, uh, met their requirement of four hours of training. I wanna remind you that the state, uh, puts the responsibility on you of getting the training. I'm just a provider trying to make it convenient for you to get that training. Uh, so I, I provide the trough, but I can't, I, I think I used this last year, can't get the horses to come and drink from that trough necessarily. And I, my apologies for using that analogy again. But, uh, do, uh, do give me some direction. If you think there's some trainings and some ways that we can, uh, address this a little bit more efficiently, uh, give me some direction on that. I'll leave that to the next meeting. I do have a possibility or a, an opportunity for training. I laid it on your desk. It's provided by the East Tennessee Development District. Uh, the East Tennessee Development District, uh, took on the responsibility, a lot of the responsibilities of the local planning assistance office. And they generally try to develop four opportunities for planning commissioners to have training throughout the year. This is the first one that I've gotten a notice on, and it's for May, uh, let's see, May nineteenth, Monday, May nineteenth. Uh, that's quite a few months away. So if you're interested in this, I've been asked that you, uh, call in early to, so they can get an idea of what the demand is. Call in early and register for this, uh, uh, this opportunity. It's a land use tour, uh, it's out at the, uh, UT Arboretum. And I think they're gonna tour the site. And, uh, I don't think they're gonna have too much opportunity after six P M. to do that, but they'll tour the site and I think they'll have presentation then on the subjects that are listed. Um, developing a training opportunity, uh, had a request from the Great Smoky Mountains Regional Greenways Council to make a presentation to all the planning commissions in the county. And we're trying to get all the planning commissions together, at least provide that opportunity so that they can present the, uh, the plan for the greenway from Knoxville down to Townsend and the Great Smoky Mountains National Parks. Got some unique, uh, characteristics, and I think you'll find that interesting. Uh, I wanna add to that opportunity, if I can arrange it, same time. Uh, the state of Tennessee is going through a review of their, their plan. Uh, they want public input and they want input from planning commissions. And I've been requested to see if we can set up a, uh, an opportunity for one of their staff to come down and present that, uh, their ideas and to get input from you. So we'd have a good hour or hour and a half and something like that. And I'll be looking around for a date that can work for most of the planning commissions, and I'll get back to you on that in the future. Uh, so we do have some opportunities. Uh, wanna remind you that, uh, there is a disclosure requirement by the state, and you should've gotten a notification on that. Uh, if you haven't filled that in, uh, you've got to January thirtieth, I believe, Marlene, is that correct? And if you're having difficulty in doing that, contact Marlene. She has a, uh, an inroad into that one and an expertise that, uh, can get that information into the state if you can just provide it to her. That's all I have.
You also have, you're back at the, uh, schedule of meetings for the year. You might wanna hold on to that. John, are you saying on this land use tour, we should go ahead and contact them immediately?
If you're interested in, yeah, in taking that. It's, it's quite a few months out, but I think what they're trying to do is to, to gauge the, uh, the demand for the, the transportation. They'll provide van transportation to go around to certain, uh, sites. And, uh, I think that's what they're trying to gauge.
That there's not a limited amount of slots.
There could be because they're using ethra and, uh, I didn't get that, that information. I think they're just wanting to get a real good idea of what the demand is.
And how long do you think that's gonna be, a two or three hour, uh?
I have no idea. It starts at six P M. and I don't think any of their stuff lasts for more than two hours. At least I haven't seen any of it do that before.
The, the topics look interesting.
Yes. They, they provide very good training. I've, I've notified you of several of their training opportunities. They, they work on the four that they work on very hard. And, uh, I would, uh, highly recommend trying to access that.
Do they only do them at, in the night and not do any in the daytime?
Uh, yeah, they only do it in the evening. I, I don't, I take that back. They have, they have provided some training through, uh, C task and M task that it's in the daytime. But I think we've gotta pay for that. And quite frankly, I don't have a budget. I have a very limited budget for training. So, uh, don't everybody stamp feet to a hundred dollar course.
All right, let me, uh, before we adjourn, let me just remind you to hold on to the packet that John has already distributed on the two-lane, uh, commercial. Uh, review it again, but let's save trees and make sure John doesn't have to reprint this too many times.
Hope you don't find it as hard as some people have found it to, uh, to read.
We are adjourned.